Meeting of the City Council of City Cape May, New Jersey. We are in the Cape May City Hall Auditorium. It is Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022. The time is now 1:03 PM. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one inch and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Under the open public meetings law, notice of this meeting was sent to the Cape May County Herald and the press of Atlantic City, and a copy of the agenda was delivered to each member of City Council and posted on the Cape May City website and Cape May City Hall Bulletin Board. Notice is hereby provided that Cape May City Council meetings are audio recorded and video streamed live. Live video streams are posted to the Cape May City website. The City of Cape May is not responsible if audio recording or live video streaming of a meeting is unavailable. Roll call. Councilmember Baldwin?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer?
Here.
Mayor Mullick?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sheehan is absent. Councilmember Yeager?
Here.
City Solicitor Gillen Schwartz?
Here.
City Manager Val?
Here.
Deputy City Clerk Dillon?
Here.
And we have Deputy City Manager Lou Blasco as well. And any additions or deletions today, Council?
I believe we do, Mayor.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Meyer, your microphone. Thank you.
I'd like to add Resolution 21008-2022. It's a resolution authorizing advertisement for bids for the reconstruction of Pennsylvania Avenue, Phase 7, trying to add to Michigan Ave.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion to add to the consent agenda, Council? We're regular.
Regular agenda, just so we can explain it.
Sure. Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
Any other additions or deletions, Council?
Any other additions or deletions?
Oh, we have to, we want to take one off the agenda, right? That was the Parking Advisory Committee?
I think we were just going to table it.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, cool.
Okay. All right, so moving on to the City Manager and City Solicitor updates, Council?
City Manager, any updates?
Manager, out of respect to the people here today, I'll wait till the end. I'll give your report.
Okay, City Solicitor?
I'll follow the manager's lead.
Okay. Next up on the agenda, City Engineers Report. Mr. Vince Orlando? And I believe Nicole is with you today? Good. Good afternoon. Thank you.
To my left is Nicole Welsh. Nicole has been with Engineering Design Associates probably 12. It seems like a long time. She's a landscape architect, and she's been working on the Kiwanis Park design. Now, the Kiwanis Park received the grant from the DCA for handicap accessibility. We've had a task force meeting, three meetings, for members of the public. We have some good dialogue, and we're here today to present our findings and our discussions to the Council, so I'm going to let Nicole take it from there.
And before you start, can I just recognize, I think I see two of the members behind the board. We have with us Bob Morris and Jenny McCanney, and I just want to thank them for jumping right on this. We had a very quick, tight schedule on this because frankly, we wanted to see this as a fall project, if possible, and they were very flexible, met with us quickly, and I think had a very, very good dialogue and I think made some good decisions, but I'll let you explain those decisions.
Nicole, if you wouldn't mind picking up the microphone and carrying it with you, speaking into it, and just let me know what you're looking at. I can put it on the screen.
All right. Good afternoon, Council. So, looking at Kiwanis Park, I'm looking at the existing conditions sheet. Just to start with the, you know, what's there right now, giving an analysis of existing conditions, there's existing play structures which are kind of outdated. There's about 20 plus or minus trees that are in decline. There's a play structure here which I'm not really sure how to use it, and maybe we can find some better alternatives. In our research, we found...
For the public, I think you're referring to what everyone calls the stacked jacks? That I think every parent just wonders, is this just so that kids climb high and fall? Or what's the game, actually? But yeah.
Yeah, so we came up with some really exciting findings. Looking at the grant with ADA accessibility, that doesn't just include handicap of one type, right? That includes all abilities and inabilities. So, bringing inclusion into some of the improvements, wheelchair, walkers, autistic children, speech impediments, sight impediments, so, so looking at some of the... Looking at some of the equipment that could be replaced, bringing inclusion and all access to all of those children. I'm going to flip this existing conditions board to the site plan, so we can look at the overall picture. So, what we've come up with, there's existing parking, but it's not really defined. So, part of the ADA accessibility is providing handicap parking. So, we've created six additional parking spaces, and then repaving some areas to create six parking spaces over here, having a total of 12 parking spaces for the park, which is really important, that one parking space being the handicap accessibility space. The play surface will be resurfaced to a poured-in-place rubber surface that will also is handicap accessible, so you can come right from the parking space to the play area. Now, from there, you have the picnic pavilion, and then a concrete path system around the park. So, it creates a fluidness throughout the whole park of accessibility, creating a connection also on Madison Avenue, a crosswalk, and a handicap curb ramp as well for bringing the community into the park. Around the existing picnic structure, we'll expand that with just a mulch area, more picnic tables, and then also bringing the inclusion of the picnic tables that have handicap accessibility as well. Coming into the park from Madison Avenue, you'll have a walkway bringing to like a landscape entrance to the park, in a sense, just some greenery there, and then a path to connect around the pond and to the existing parking and tennis courts this way. So, what's happening in the play structure, you ask? So, this play structure here, now I'm looking at the playground enlargement sheet. So, this play structure here, and you could see it on the, on the site here, the line around the play structure represents the safety, safety zone or the fall zone for each of the play elements. So, there's existing swing sets there. We're proposing to remove one of the swing sets and leaving the other two there, but incorporating new accessible swings to retrofit into the existing swings. So, swing set. So, there's the connect seat. So, that gives the opportunity for a parent-child, two siblings, on the one swing together. And then there's the freedom seat, which is again, just an all-inclusive accessible seat that will be retrofitted into the existing swing sets. There are some existing spring rockers, the little dino and the frog. I propose to keep them, but just move them into a different location to allow for the new play structure. This play structure is accessible not just to the able children and the disabled children, but for all ages of children, from 2 to 12 years old. There's small slides, there's large slides, there's monkey bars climbing overhead, there's accessible access for if you are in a wheelchair or a rocker, you will be able to access the play structure. And then there's actually these really great rocker for somebody in a wheelchair, that they can wheel up onto this play structure, get themselves onto this rocker, put their hands on the bars, and physically rock themselves. And it's, like I said, great for, you know, limited abilities, and all able children also love this feature. Along the rest of the play area, there's some other components, the inclusive orbit and the volta spinner. Again, all access, all accessible and inclusive play pieces. And then some other pieces that might be tucked to the side, so for the children that may, might not want a very loud and exciting play day, some children might be a little bit more reclusive. Some autistic spectrum children, the stimulation is a little bit too much, and they need a little quiet time, so therefore, a little clubhouse on the side that will create imaginative play. The sensory stimulation board will create, yeah, just more sensory stimulation, that's what the board is called, having things that move, things that make sound, things that you can touch, things that you can interact with. And then, oh, and then this piece, the serenity spot. And this one is great, again, for children on the autistic spectrum. They come into this busy, active playground, everybody's screaming, it's too much stimulation for them, and they just might need a little quiet corner. So, the serenity spot creates that, and it has things within the bench that they can explore and slowly get themselves up to coming into the rest of the playground. On the structure itself, there's a bunch of panels that you have choices on sensory panels, whether you want them to make sound, or make shapes, or however the children interact with them, some of them are musical. And then, so that's all for the play structure. And then another big element of the handicap accessory upgrades for the park, looking on the enlargement plan, again, is the handicap accessory restroom. So, this restroom we're proposing can, we're still, you know, looking at possible modular or having an architect come in and build it, however it's built and designed, but this would be the concept, that you would have two handicap accessible restrooms, having the baby changing station in one, and having an adult changing station in the other, not necessarily adult, but all-inclusive, it's, yeah, just for anybody else who needs, that's not a baby. And then it'll have, kind of, and this image here shows, restroom on each side, a little alcove for drinking fountains, water bottle filling station, the overhang roof, and then in the back will be storage for, you know, the camp, Camp Cape May, and whoever else the park needs to store things. And then the other feature of the park is the existing basketball court. So, again, keeping this fluidity of accessibility, coming from the handicap spot all onto the play structure, all along the pathways, and connecting right into the basketball court, there's a new asphalt sideline area on the basketball court with some benches, and then a new fence along the pond side of the basketball court for all those balls that make their way into the, into the pond. So, so we're not basketball fishing anymore. So, this, and it's just a nice, on this board here, on the imagery board, I think I have a photo of the fence here. So, there's just a nice black wire fence that'll keep the ball contained there. Some other images on here just represents some of the lighting that might be proposed, simple, low-level bollard lighting along the path system, again, the handicap accessible picnic tables here. And then some of the other things that we've talked about in creating sensory stimulation, and also having this as a, as a learning tool. So, we'll be taking some trees out, so we'll be proposing some landscaping, new trees, new perennials and shrubs, but creating, creating those gardens as sensory stimulation gardens. Having this allium is very whimsical, lamb's ear shrub perennial here, it's very soft to the touch. So, so these kids can come up and feel the plants, smell them, these peonies smell so amazing. So, it's very, you know, sensual, sensual, sensory stimulation on that. And then also using still all the trees and shrubs on the Cape May required tree list, using things that maybe are a little bit outside of the box. A lot of plans are repetitive with maples and oaks and cherries and dogwood. Well, what about shag bark hickory? When's the last time that's been planted? Or butternut, macronut hickory, or butternut, or American beech, some of these great trees that are on our approved, recommended tree list, but aren't seen very often, so we can create almost not a botanical garden, but start to feel that way, and start to have some education for the kids as well. On some of those trees, we can have some tree tags. What is this tree? Tulip poplar, liridendron talipifera, but we can add braille. So, it can really be accessible, inclusive, sensory stimulation, cognitive learning, social dynamics, physical endurance, creative play, and emotional development, not just for the kids, but for the whole community. Thanks. Any questions?
Really cool.
I don't know if you mentioned the, the walkway around the pond. I heard that's approximately a quarter mile?
Yes, plus or minus. So, if we can tweak it to be a quarter mile loop around the pond, and then that could be, you know, that could bring in walkers, you know, you could just walk around it, people with strollers, whatever, and having the access to the community, you know, to the Madison Avenue.
I'd like also the access to the tennis courts, too.
Could you talk a little bit about the existing gazebo?
Yes, so the existing gazebo, I don't think I have a picture of it. So, right now, wait, do I? Thought I did.
I think it's on the other one.
Oh, yeah, on the existing conditions sheet. So, one of the things on the existing gazebo, it has a concrete pad inside with some picnic tables. Some of those picnic tables will be moved out to bring in the accessible handicap picnic tables, but also, being that the play surface, the rubber poured-in-place surface will come right up to the gazebo, will do an asphalt, I mean, I'm sorry, not asphalt, a concrete apron around that, just so that it, it's a nice detail, it just connects everything fluidly. So, that will remain, if there's any enhancements that need to be done, but that, that's in pretty good shape. Oh, that gazebo, yes, the gazebo near the pond, we are proposing to improve that a little bit, maybe a paint job, some benches inside, so that can, you know, yeah, easily be done there.
I, I love the poured-in-place rubber flooring, I guess, that goes right up to the pavilion. I just think that's so nice for our handicap people and for our kids at play. I mean, it really is very neat. If you haven't seen this, it's rubber matting, yes, a lot of the newer parks have it, but, you know, it's very, very soft, if you fall on it, it's, it's, you know, pretty, pretty easy to fall on and everything, so it's, it's very cool.
It's about a four-inch-thick rubber pouring, and that is for a rating about eight or nine feet for a fall rating for safety.
And the good thing about that type of surface, you don't have to monitor it, you know, a lot of mulch, if you have mulch surfaces, you've got to make sure that you go out and replenish the mulch to make sure that it meets the thickness requirement. You could become liable at a point in time, if somebody falls and there's not enough mulch there and they get hurt. At least with the poured-in-place rubber surface, you know that there's a sustainability there for that. I think it's a very integral part of the design. And while mulch is considered handicap accessible, let's face it, it really isn't, and I think the poured-in-place rubberized surface will not only make people in wheelchairs, but people that are on crutches or just have some disabilities are going to be able to, to navigate that type of surface.
That's great.
Just one more thing, go ahead.
No, I was just, I was just going to say, I, I think the, the play equipment that both handicap and non-handicap kids can use together is absolutely amazing, and I, I think the serenity spot will be used more by the parents than it will by the children. I hope you can see the kids from the serenity spot, that's where I would be, yeah.
Yeah.
That's very nice.
Yeah, and along that, not only will the play structure allow able-bodied and not able, non-able-bodied or limited abilities, but all ages, too, from three years old to 12 years old, and, and that there's a separation with the play structure. Like, when you come, when you approach it, there's a ramp here for handicap, wheelchair, there's the little rocker thing, and then there's a smaller slide here. And then on the other side, which this picture shows, you have the big kid slides, you know, you have the spiral and, and the climbing thing, so it's, it's, even though it's on the same structure, you're kind of separating the 12-year-olds from the two-year-olds. That's a little bit of safety also, you know, 12-year-olds can be a little rougher.
It's impressive, very.
I love the, the thought that you put into it, too, and just beyond the accessibility, but the, the idea of marking all the trees, including braille and things like that, the sensory, even in regards to the plantings, I, I think is really, really well thought out and neat.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that how, what makes this park super unique, not just the pond, but if you can see in the existing photographs how shaded this area is, you know, people, you don't have to sit in the middle of a field and be burnt and watching your kids and stuff, I just, I think it's such a unique aspect of this park, and then promoting those other trees is a great, great idea.
Awesome.
And we did a complete tree inventory, so they are taking some of the older trees that are not doing quite well, which will enhance the existing trees that much better.
That's great.
Which those are shown in red here on this existing. So, there are a good number of trees, but they're, they're in serious decline, showing decay, and, yeah, we can definitely enhance it with some great new trees.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments on this? No? Well, great job, it's really nice, and I do, again, want to thank Jenny McCanney, who's the president of the Kiwanis Club, and Bob Morris, I still can't see you because you're behind these boards. Also a member of Kiwanis Club and valued member of our pedestrian bicycle committee, and, and thank you very much for your help and support in this. And Sean Deegan couldn't be here, but he also was involved, father in, in the area, and also a member of the school board. So, thank you very much for your, for your help with this.
And I'm going to thank Nicole, because one of the things that she kind of brought to the table, which was not even on my radar, is when, when you think about handicap accessibility, we think about kids in wheelchairs. And, and my mind was focused on that, and she actually said, there's a lot more out there. We've, we've got to look at all these other groups, the blind, the, you know, some of the autistic kids. So, the fact that we broaden this not only to handicap accessibility, but all facets of the handicap, and I think that, like I told you before, I appreciate that insight because it wasn't on my radar until we start diving into it, and then Nicole did a fabulous job with that.
Very cool. Okay. When do we, when do we start? Yeah, all right. All right, Vince, you want to?
So, I do, and I just have a very brief report that's dated July 15th.
Nicole, can I actually ask you maybe to put those to the side that, so people can see it if they want to take a look as they leave?
We're going to leave them here.
Oh, that's great, great, great. Pardon me, Vince, sorry.
So, the firehouse obviously is continuing construction. In fact, Nicole was, recently, we did a modification to that, so we're taking the walkway that's on the parking lot side, reducing that and putting a landscape strip. So, Nicole actually did a, a landscape plan, and one of the things that, the challenge there was that we're putting in plantings that are native but climate-sensitive, so that we're not going to have it irrigated, so that there are...
Drought tolerant.
All those, all drought-tolerant plants. So, that's been in place. I think the contractor is going to reduce the sidewalk, and I think we're going to try to do the plantings in-house through public work, so that's been done. The Welcome Center... The welcome center, we finished design, we have our approvals from New Jersey Transit. We've had a meeting with the contractor, who initially came up back and said, I can't meet the old price, and he had some price increases. I recently talked to him last week, and we're trying to take out certain elements of the contract so that we could work to bring this to at least a substantial completion early in September. So unfortunately, Mr. Marinino couldn't meet last week because he had COVID, and so we're going to meet this week to kind of finalize those drawings. I'll report back to council of what could be included, what has to be excluded at this point in time.
Vince, just to remind council, he has the contract
He has the contract, right.
On this from 2016?
Four years.
Yeah.
Four to five years.
Okay. But that would be great news if we could get that going.
That's the game. Palafiat Street Park is still currently being tweaked. Councilman Meyer asked me to meet with him at some point in time, maybe discuss some of his ideas, so we're still in that conceptual process. So I'd be happy to meet with anybody, and we could get together this week or early next week.
Well, you know, we had a committee in the past, so I just want to make sure some of the discussions that wasn't heard by you, I can share them with you.
I appreciate that. The Beach Avenue Promenade out expansion, that construction's been completed. Public Works did a fabulous job on bringing that surface in, and I think it, as far as I could see, has been well received by the community.
We've, we've gotten complaints of cold feet now, is what I'm
Oh, I'll tell you what, I burned a heck out of my feet last week, it was intense, and just a few days later, I was walking on, on that part of the boardwalk, and I just think that we should continue it, you know?
Right.
Great idea.
Great product.
Yeah.
On the seawall redesign, we had a kickoff meeting with Colliers on July 12th. They're coming back and doing some concepts to present to, to myself, and then we'll in turn bring it to council on trying to look at a design that is functional, but not as massive as some of the concepts that the previous engineer came up with. It seems like it was overdeveloped a little bit, and we're trying to take a little bit more simplistic approach to obviously protect the community, but have the seawall act as a function also. So they have their charge, I'm hoping that within the next week or two, they'll come back to us with some concepts, and we'll be moving along with that project. Pennsylvania Avenue Road Reconstruction, which is Phase Four or Five, I'm not sure, it's the one from Pittsburgh into the project. DOT has reviewed the plans, they came back last Thursday with a checklist of items that they wanted to see, because the grant doesn't include some of the underground utilities. They include the curbing, the sidewalk, the drainage, and the paving, but they don't include some of the utilities, so they need us to break them out to include them on the drawings, but be separate because there's not a pay item that they look at. You heard Kiwanis Park presentation, and, you know, if council is good, I think our next step is to start working drawings, get them approved by DCA. Of course, it is a DCA funded grant. I'll work along with Mark Blower to get those plans submitted to them, and then hopefully try to get this out to bid and under construction this fall.
That'd be great.
And lastly, we have the water transmission line project, thanks to Mr. Belasco. We finally have Atlantic Electric signed off on it. I sent it back to you because we need a signature from committee. Once I have that, I can submit for my DEP permit, and then it's just a matter of waiting for them. But I don't see this as a heavy lift with the DEP, so it's only an equalization line between the two wells. As I discussed earlier, we need a transition area waiver because we're going through a wetlands buffer. It's already within the existing right of way that's been disturbed by Atlantic Electric, so we don't foresee any issues. But I guess we got our sign off last Wednesday from Atlantic Electric.
This is the one we received the grant on, from well eight, I think, to, to the, to the D cell plant?
To the D cell.
Right. Do you think this will be a winter project, or?
It could be. I mean, I think this is, it's a really, it's, the construction's somewhat simplistic.
Right.
It's just an equalization line. The hardest thing was getting the transition area waiver permit from the state because we're within a wetland buffer.
Gotcha. Okay.
So that's my report, members, sorry to be so long. It's fine, it's a half hour, it's usually, we just try to keep it to 10 minutes. Mike said 15 minutes.
That was a nice presentation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Quick question, Vince, ideally, I know that with Pennsylvania Avenue, you have to wait, you're still waiting on NJ DOT. Ideally, when's the start?
I think that we could get this bid and complete it by end of the year.
Okay.
That'd be great.
So it's just a matter, once they give us our approval, I'll come back to township or the city for a bid tabulation committee, and then we'll go out to bid, so, and it's not that difficult of a, of a project either, so, you know, I think we could be done by the end of the year on that.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Any more questions? Good?
No.
Well, Vince, thank you very much, Nicole, thank you very much, very nice presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda, we have resolutions?
Yes, we have Resolution 200-07-2022. This is the resolution authorizing a person-to-person and place-to-place liquor license transfer for plenary retail consumption license number 0502-33012003. This is for the Marion and Management, Inc., to New Jersey Farmers Cooperative Group, LLC. It was tabled from the last meeting, and the public hearing was continued to today, Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor, I would make a suggestion on that. I think we should proceed with the hearing first, and then we'll deal with the resolution at the conclusion of the hearing.
So no motion at this time, then?
Correct.
Okay.
So what we can do is reopen the public hearing, which was, began on July 19th, and I'll note a couple, so consider the hearing commenced at this point. I'll note for council and the record, a few supplemental documents and exhibits that were provided to the city clerk, and the first of which is February 17th, 2022, we discussed this at the last portion of the hearing, which is the memorandum from Polystein and Associates, the city engineer, on providing a zoning opinion, which was subsequently adopted by the city zoning officer at the time on February 22nd, 2022. So there's a report from Mr. Hurless, there's an email from our zoning officer saying he adopts this, the opinion. So there's that. That memorandum also references two resolutions, prior approvals. One is a 1996 resolution of the City of Cape May Planning Board, that's Resolution 4-3-96, colon, four. Then Resolution Number 709, 7-09-03, colon, one, that's a 2003 resolution of the Cape May City Zoning Board. I think council can also take what's called judicial notice of an opinion from the appellate division, which is 2005, affirming that resolution, the determination that the property is a tourist guest home. Mr. Caravan, do you, do you agree with that?
Yes.
Okay. Then there's also a July 20th, 2022 letter from John and Judy Lynch, 714 Corgi Street, as a follow-up to the July 19th hearing, which was submitted to the city clerk. There's a July 2020, or July 20, 2022 amended letter from John and Judy Lynch, which was submitted to the city clerk. A follow-up to that is a July 28th, 2022 letter from the law offices of Caravan and Morris, the applicant's counsel, summarizing various proposed conditions in that meeting that we anticipated they would have with the neighbors following the last hearing. And then finally, there's an August 1st, 2022 letter directed to the city clerk by Gigi Bresin at 703 and 705 Jefferson Street, and that letter unequivocally is objecting to the application. So with that, I just wanted to summarize those for the record. We, we had some other documents that were covered in the last hearing, but these are supplements to that. So with that, just proceeding procedurally, we can hear from the applicant if they have anything to add to their presentation at the last hearing, and then we'll also have an opportunity for the public to speak. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, municipal officials. As we indicated, we were, we met with Mr. Lynch and residents on Corgi Street. We listened to their concerns, and we believe we've come up with a plan which will work for everyone. I think they're here tonight, and they can address that. We have no objection to those being introduced as conditions on the license, and upon approval, we will also stipulate, and I've talked with members of the Bray Family Partnership, that the mansion will continue to honor those conditions, even if the license is at some point segregated. However, we don't waive the right to come in for a future site plan or some future modification at another point in time. We've also supplied you with a sketch of the downstairs bar and upstairs bar, a operation time, which I reviewed with Mr. Lynch. I believe that's acceptable. So unless anyone has any questions, the applicant at this juncture has nothing further.
Any questions?
I have a question. I was reading these old resolutions, and it mentioned that as per your state house discussions, that there are 96 guests at, to be in this facility at one time? Is that correct?
Yes, but that's generally much greater than our occupancy. We usually do two people to a room.
Right.
And there's 24 rooms, so it's usually much less than that.
So it's much less than that, which would make sense because you only have seating for 50 people in your banquet space, is that correct? And that's going to remain the same?
Right, and there's an upstairs area as well, so there's a downstairs and an upstairs to do events. There's upstairs seating and downstairs seating.
Are they done simultaneously?
Usually it's all part of one continuous event.
So there wouldn't be more than 50 guests?
It would be, with, you'd consider the additional seating in the upstairs area. I don't know if you're familiar with it, but the second floor, or the entrance, I'm going to call it the ground floor, and we'll call the other one the lower level, the ground floor has a row of tables and chairs and entire room that wraps around, and that's usually used as the breakfast room.
Okay.
And then there's the downstairs room as well.
So you're saying, for the most part, it's, it's a lot less than 96 guests using this facility at a single time?
Yes, as, using the facility without an event, yes.
Do any of the employees of this, outside, like your license holder, would they be using this facility to drink as well? Or any other employees of the guest house?
No, it's contemplated that employees are not going to be using the facility. It's going to be open, as we indicated, by key to guests.
And there's going to be absolutely no outside serving of food or alcohol to anybody that's not already staying at this?
So are you talking about physically outside, or serving outside the parameters?
Outside the parameters.
No.
Okay.
If you're not, if you're not a guest of an event, or you're not a guest of the hotel, you will not be served.
And if you wanted to do that, you would need a C variance, is that correct?
If we wanted to expand to outside service, we would have to come before you for a variance, right?
For, to the zoning board?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I ask a few questions? Maybe you can talk a little bit about, because the more I'm looking at this, the more I'm seeing it as being a change of use with the conditions that are, that you agreed to, whether it be landscaping or lighting, can, and also
So they're not, I'm sorry, go ahead, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
That's okay. You know, also, you know, the, the way that the property's being used, whether or not you're looking at, you know, refuse recycling, there were some, some things that changed with that. Can you talk a little bit about how you think it's not going to be a change of use?
Well, it's not a change of use at all. The mansion presently is code compliant, and we have a method of operation. We've just agreed to alter some of our practices on site to accommodate the neighbors. In other words, these, we're, we're code compliant with what we do, but the neighbors have asked us if we could have a recycling pickup not done by the city, so it doesn't cause noise, if we could move a smoking area from the back. That's not usage changes, those are just onsite practices consistent with our operation.
I'm going to reference Craig Hurless's report, and it was actually on page three of three. He talked about site, site plan exemptions, number four, and you can talk about this a little bit. It, it says a proposed development not involving a change in use and not affecting existing circulation, drainage, which I don't think is affected, building arrangements, landscape buffering, lighting, and other considerations of the site plan. I, I'm wondering if we are looking at a change of use, and this is something that might need to go to the zoning board for a determination?
Official and engineer have opined that this is not a change of use, that the use is permitted. I'm not understanding what
I'm specifically referencing the, the actual site, how it's being used, and you are changing some of that.
Well, no, all we're doing is collecting the recycles differently, turning off outside light.
And I don't know how that's being done. That's, yeah, I, again, that's why I'm asking for you to clarify it.
Change, those are just site plan issues. In other words, we, the neighbors have asked us to accommodate them relative to items. So now, we, we in good faith told the board we would do that, and now, despite the fact that the zoning official and the engineer have indicated it's not a change of use, we don't want to be hamstrung for trying to be good neighbors and accommodate the neighbors.
So if I can jump in here, the zoning officer, or Mr. Hurless's memorandum, points to an opinion that this doesn't affect a change for purposes of a use variance. That is not crystal clear to me, as the city solicitor, but the fact that the zoning officer made a determination a few months ago on that, that's kind of the way the municipal land use law works, is that they made a determination. But I will say this, you know, liquor, I, I think you can have a situation that's not a change in use for purposes of zoning, but that doesn't prohibit council from taking in traditional factors that you would, it, it doesn't mean that it's not changing the use, in other words, for purposes of whether you cite a liquor license there. So I don't, what I don't want to get confused about for council's purposes is that because a zoning officer has determined, you don't have to go get a use variance, that, that means there's, there's no changes to the site. It's just simply not the case. So it does kind of complicate council's consideration, because now we're, we're having like a little bit of a site plan application here, which is really not the purpose of this. And, and that's a product of citing a liquor license here and a zoning officer determination that it's not a change of use and not requiring site plan. Without, it's, you don't need to get into the right or wrong of that at this point to know that there is a rational basis for council taking into consideration the fact that, okay, fine, it may not be a zoning officer change of use, but you're citing a liquor license there, and we have to take into consideration what that means to the site, what it means to the neighboring property owners. So all those things that you would take into consideration, in that context, council can take into consideration here, the fact that it's surrounded by, it's in a residential zone, it's an RS zone, and it's surrounded on a couple sides by the RS zone and the R3 zone. So whether it's a, technically, do you have to go to the board? The zoning officer appears to have weighed in on that, but that doesn't foreclose council from taking into those considerations of, is this site appropriate and those types of things. So I just want to make that clear, that council's not foreclosed from taking into those considerations, and I think they're reflected in a lot of conditions that have been proposed, too.
Just on that, because I see that as a little bit separate than the liquor license transfer, but so many of the questions that have come up, in my opinion, have been zoning questions. I just, just my opinion, I, I really do think this should have went to the zoning board. We're beyond that at this point, and I agree with that where we're at. The decision was made. I just want to say that I, personally, I think this should have went to the zoning board, because so many of the things that we're having to work out at this table, I see as zoning issues that, that I'd prefer the zoning board to handle. That's just my opinion, and we're past that. I, I
So Mayor, I guess my response to that would be So Mayor, I guess my response to that would be that we are currently code compliant, and the council asked us to speak with the neighbors relative to changing some onsite practices.
And I appreciate that.
None of which are germane to a liquor license. They're really, the way the mansion operates, and they have issues with current operation, and asked us if we would change those, which in good faith, we've agreed to do.
And I appreciate that, and I really do. My only point was, I just think the decision not to send this to the zoning board was, in my opinion, a poor one, just because we're dealing with so many zoning discussions that personally, I'd rather the zoning board discuss. But we're past that, and, and frankly, you, like you just said, have made some arrangements with the folks around the town, and I appreciate that for doing that. My only little issue is, I've watched those zoning board meetings, I've seen where, you know, you have a person over in, you know, on Virginia Avenue who wants to extend their staircase in their backyard, and they're in the zoning board. I see that as pretty minor compared to what this is. So I, I just think that this probably should have, and some of these things would have been worked out at that meeting. However, again, we're past it, and I think you've made some concessions already with, with the public.
I have a question, if I may.
Please.
Mr. Solicitor, in the, in the four, or, you know, if this was a zoning board meeting, and we denied this applicant, they would have a right to appeal.
Right.
If we deny them today, what are their, what's, what's their next step they can do?
Similarly, applicants and objectors have the right to appeal determination. Just, it's a different tract, but similar process. There is a right of appeal.
All right, thank you.
And it's to the, to the...
ABC.
To the ABC.
Any other questions for the attorney?
I'd like to hear from the public.
Could we open it up for a public comment?
Absolutely.
Anyone wishing to speak from the public? If you could state your name and address for the record.
Sure, Mr. Lynch.
Means my name was mentioned earlier a couple times. I must have closed the loop. Now, the applicant and, and her attorney did reach out to us. I spoke with Mr. Caravan.
Mr. Lynch, could you please state your name and address for the record?
John Lynch.
It's repetitive, I know.
At 714 Corgi Street.
Thank you.
Apologize. Everything that was offered as far as good faith meetings happened. We met at this other mansion, we met with the applicant, Hamilton, and her lawyer and I spoke several times since then. And as far as the conditions is what we discussed, and he articulated the, the conditions in his letter. Maybe not the exact way I would have said them, but they're adequate, and I want to thank him.
Perfect.
Best I can say. Actually, one question. We did speak this morning about the recycling time, is that something that's done?
Mr. Caravan, if you feel free to grab one. Absolutely, you can just turn it on to the green light. Thank you.
Specifically, there was a request relative to the lights along Jefferson. And although what I indicated to Mr. Lynch was, although I can't commit to disconnecting those lights, because we don't want to dim the entire exterior of the premises, we are going to have our electrician look at it, because they're LED lights, and see if some sort of rheostat can be there. Plus, I met with one of the gentlemen who lives on Jefferson, very nice man, and we're going to meet, Mark. We're going to meet at some point in the future to address any individual lighting. I just can't commit to that without talking to the engineer, but in, in good faith, we will have those discussions.
Great.
And then the recycling is in the morning rather than at night?
Recycling will be dumped into the cans in the morning, so that it doesn't make the noise. And we have a, a commercial recycler picking it up just with our trash.
And, and that goes to the heart of what Councilwoman Sheehan mentioned. When you're in a residential use surrounding a commercial use, you know, nighttime activities do matter. So the request of as far as timing the recycling, that's not change in use, we're just changing a consideration of timing. And they were kind enough to do that for us, so that it would happen in the morning, like between nine and 10, or whatever time that works out for you folks. So as part of the normal hubbub of a day, rather than the peace, peacefulness of 11, 11 o'clock or 12 o'clock at night. Anyway, I just wanted to say thank you to the, to the council, thank you to all involved for giving us the opportunity to talk, and to encouraging the meeting. And I thank you for the applicant.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
My name is John O'Donoghue. I live on 811 Corgi Street. My wife spoke at the last meeting. She's not able to be here today. A lot of people weren't able to be here today. I just want to say a few things about this license, which nobody seems to understand, including lawyers. It's not specific to Southern Mansion. Is that correct? It's a vendor's license.
No.
It can be transferred.
It's, they're proposing to cite this at the property known as the Southern Mansion. So in order to move it around, they would have to reapply to council if there, there was another site for this. It's not mobile. It's not like an ice cream shop.
It's not a mobile truck, or it's not like...
No.
All right.
It's not, it's not Mr. Softy. They, they have to pick a spot.
It's Southern Mansion.
And, and that's, that's why we're having this discussion that's taking two meetings, is that we're trying to figure out if this is the right spot for it.
Okay. It's also part of a residential...
And not to cut into your comment, but if they, if they want to move it somewhere else, you know, it would be, it's a person to person, meaning the, the licensee would have, you know, the control over the license. But if they want to move it to another location within town, they would have to come back to council and have the same discussion we're having now.
Okay. And...
Did I convince you that the lawyers kind of know what they're doing?
Kind of. Very vaguely, but the other thing is, how important is a master plan? I mean, when they make these master plans, I can't remember when, what year this master plan is going. The big thing was that the commercial aspect of the town was not interfering on the residential. That was why they were rejected for a restaurant, which was, what, 10, 12 years ago?
20 years ago, it was a hotel.
Mr. Caravan, I'm sorry, your microphone, please.
20 years, did I go? Yeah. 20 years ago, I believe, 2002, there was a application done to declare it a hotel, and the ruling that Mr. Gillensworth cited previously, am I right with that, Chris? 2002?
You are. 2003, it says.
2003?
2003 resolution.
Yeah. So, so the application was to have it deemed a hotel within the state definition, and I guess there's various definitions, because DCA deems it a hotel, but the appellate division opined that it was a guest, tourist guest house.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Which is permitted in RS.
Yes.
But it's also a residential zone. Can we agree on that?
So it's a, it's a building that is fronting on a, rearing on a residential zone, and in the front, it has a commercial barn, restaurant, a post office to the side, a real estate office, a dentist's office, a church, and a number of commercial uses.
Yeah, but those people, they were included in the master plans, they were grandfathered in.
So the mansion, the mansion was built in 1856? So any, these folks would have come to this knowing its operation, right?
Knowing its what?
Its operation.
All right. The other point about you talking about being a good neighbor and all this, I was at the first wedding at Willow Creek, for example. Your mother was... Your mother officiated a wedding. She denied it was a wedding after she did this. And the other person, Gigi Brison, in her letter, she states that she wasn't a good neighbor when she, in her, I'm sure it's in her letter, but, so the idea that these are great neighbors is not really completely true. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Bob Fader, 819 Corgi Street. I would just like to get a better understanding of the transfer of the liquor license. As I understand it, the licensee acquired the license, the license from the Marion Inn?
So there, the licensee is NJ Farmer's Cooperative, and the representative of that is Hamilton Wild. And she's applying, she hasn't been granted, this hasn't closed yet, they're hoping that it does, but it's a person to person, meaning from the old owner of the Marion Inn to, from person to person, to Ms. Wild's company, and then a place to place. So it's two things at the same time, to go to the company and then go to cite it at the Southern Mansion.
And there's a contract for that?
There's an agreement of sale, yes.
And what is the price?
I believe, Mr. Caravan, you, that was attached to the application.
So the total, well, there's a split price. I think the liquor license, the way it's allocated, is 1 million or 1,001, yeah?
50,000.
1,001, yeah. And now the licensee has a lease with the Southern Mansion.
That's correct.
And the Southern Mansion is going to pay rent. And how much is that? No, the, the licensee is going to pay rent to the mansion. And how much, they're going to pay rent to the mansion? Right. And the rent is a specific sum. It is not in any way conditioned upon liquor sales. There is no proportional amount being paid if sales exceed a certain point, and the lease is of public record, and you can get a copy. Yeah, it just, to me, it doesn't seem reasonable that somebody would pay a million dollars and have income derived from this little spot in the Southern Mansion. It's, it, it doesn't make sense. So there's no connection between the buyer and the seller? There's no, there's no connection between the buyer and the seller. The seller's the Marion Inn. Well, whoever, whoever bought, whoever's acquiring the license from the Marion Inn, I think is paying too much for what they're going to get. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I'm Melissa Bissler. I live next door to John, and I just want to add my voice to what John has said, how much we appreciate both Hamilton and her lawyer, Mark, working with us to accommodate the concerns that we had prior to their having a license. So that's really all I wanted to say.
And Ms. Parker, I'm sorry, your address? Ms. Parker?
Address 714, 716 Corgi.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Should we close public comment, or any?
Closing remarks, one of the applicant?
We, Deputy Mayor Sheehan is not here today. She's absent. She did, so she's not here to vote, but she is also a member of the public and, and indicated in an email that she's opposed to this. So she's up, she's opposed to it. I, I feel like I have to note that for the record, not, not as a voting member, but as a member of the public, and that's, that was indicated.
She did write in a letter. Do you have that? I think it, I think it should be read. I, I see we have one other public...
Solicitor is comfortable.
Go ahead. We haven't closed public comment.
We, we, so...
Is the letter that Gigi wrote?
The letter that Gigi wrote is, is part of the record.
It's part of the, they've all read it?
It was sent to council, they all...
Okay, you all read it?
Yes.
Okay. Is anyone going to highlight any part of the letter?
It...
It's pretty selfish, Lance.
Well, she's, she's diametrically opposed to the application.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm late. I, I have to work.
Name and address for the record.
Mike Venner, 821 Corgi Street. The person that can't be here today, I mean, can we table this again? Because I hate the thought that someone is going to not be able to vote, and they're opposing it, and we have some concerns living on the 800 block of Corgi Street about how this is going to affect, you know, our lives, given half of the people on Corgi are full-time residents, and we have some concerns about it. So I've missed several of the meetings, but, because again, I've had business obligations, but, you know, I don't know if that's possible or not.
We really can't table it due to one person's absence. I mean, that's, that...
And does this have to get renewed every year?
Yes. Yes, and, and I said this at the last meeting, I'll say it again, because this is true for any applicant. Every liquor license needs to be renewed every year. So any issues that come up, and again, this is true of every applicant, every liquor license holder, can be reviewed, changed, and, and frankly, denied.
Yeah.
In, in an extreme instance.
And Bob and I talked, we live next door to each other. I didn't understand the finances either. I mean, why is someone paying a million bucks for a liquor license and not making a lot of money? So it just makes no sense to me. It's a massive investment. I mean, do you guys understand it?
I, I totally agree with you, but that's not what we're here for, unfortunately.
Well, it makes me wonder what the motives are and what they're going to use it for. If you don't understand how the money really fits, you know, it makes me wonder what is really going to happen there. That's my concern. So if you don't understand...
Well, I always have my, my suspicions, and if you want to hear what I think...
I would, I would love to hear it, Shane. Let's hear it, Shane.
I'm thinking this is a temporary thing, and if there's going to be something down the road that this license is going to go into, but I can't guarantee that, and that's just my speculation, that's all. I said too much.
But it could very well be, but it could very well be nowhere near Corgi or Jefferson or, but it could be going someplace else entirely.
All right.
And for purposes of this discussion, you know, what they may do with it later, and whether this is a good financial decision or not, we can speculate about that, but that's really, those aren't the issues that you need to hone in on to determine if this is in the public interest, which really is the question presented for, for council. But...
Wait, wait. You said this is for the public interest, or for, or to determine the right of the applicant?
It's the determination of whether to cite, to make this transfer, person to person, and cite this liquor license at that location, the determination of whether that's in the public interest. That's what council's job is to do as part of this hearing. So, and, and that, that determination has broad boundaries, you know, and that's why all the, the location and zoning considerations, you can take into consideration the facts on the ground. You're not bound by a zoning officer's letter that's informative, it's not dispositive. And if it is, were to be cited at this location, it would be including all those conditions that is a, a part of that resolution tonight, so it's not a free for all. And if they were to move the location somewhere else, the applicant, council, the whole public at this point is aware that they would have to come before council and make a case for another location that may have different conditions, but that's, that's kind of the process, and it's renewed on an annual basis. So if there are issues, and we missed a condition this year, and that something needs to be addressed in the future, council has the flexibility to reevaluate that on an annual basis, because Councilman Meyer, that determination of public interest occurs on an annual basis.
Well, my question is, you know, if I were to not like this application or this location for the liquor license, how can I deny it if there's no change in the use?
Well, that, that was what I was getting at, I think.
Because you can have, there, you can have changes to a site, physical changes to a site that don't arise to, you have to go to the zoning board for use variance. You know, there's all sorts of changes you can do to a site under the zoning code that don't force you to go to the board for it. My point is that, that the determination that this is not requiring a use variance does not handcuff council from making a determination one way or the other. And I want that to be clear for the record, because there could be a rational basis for looking at this, as you can see. There's people that feel one way about this, there's others that are presenting facts and reasons why you may go the other direction. My point is to say that you could go either way on this, okay? And, and you're not bound, a zoning officer's determination in a letter does not, is not the final word on a liquor license transfer. Okay? That's, that's my advice to you, is that if you have concerns, and that letter doesn't address them, that you're not handcuffed by just, he said it was okay.
Let me ask you another question. If this applicant were to take this liquor license and put it in another location in town, just for a location to run their operations out of, and they were to provide alcohol to these special events, like what's going on already, how would that be any different?
I'm not sure.
Well, maybe you can answer my question. Who cer, who currently provides the alcohol for special events?
So there are a number, whoever the individuals contract with.
Okay.
And they contract with colliers, came, whoever.
Okay, it's not necessarily a bar, it could be a liquor store.
No, they're usually liquor stores, yeah. They're usually liquor stores.
And so who serves the alcohol from the liquor store?
So they have, at the event, individuals that serve it. The liquor store just brings it.
So that sounds like less control and oversight in that, in that regard.
I'm not following you.
Well, to me, it sounds like it could, it's less, it's less government oversight. Well, to me, it sounds like it's less, it's less government oversight when a liquor store supplies the alcohol.
There's less, there's less oversight than what you have. Right, absolutely. As a, as a licensee, we are subject to your annual review, yes.
So that might be, it might not even be a licensed bartender or a person that has the training to.
Usually, I would suspect that they are friends of the bride or groom.
That's what I was going to.
Had to mix a whiskey sour.
Yeah, so I think the question we kind of had, if it's no, if it's no different than what it was before where they got it from Colliers, because, you know, we did Willow Creek, same thing, we got it from Colliers, you know, then why do you need to do this? I mean, our concern, because if it's a million bucks, you know, what's really going on? Because we don't understand it. And, you know, and if it's no different than how it's done today, then why do you need it? And why does someone have to invest all that money if it's no different? You know, we just wish we understood that because we literally are on Corgie, as you guys probably know, where half of us are full-time residents. We're getting more all the time. So, you know, talk about public interests, we're all very concerned that we're going to have the outside bars, large crowds, you know, once they get a liquor license, and that's something we don't want.
Well, according to the, this RS zone, I don't know if you've heard it before, you can hear, that state houses do have a use in this, in this zone. So they can have special events and do those things. So it wouldn't be necessarily a change in the use of the property. Maybe just some changes to the property itself. I don't know. That helps, yeah.
No.
So what I would also note for the record, for council, is that all of the changes that are listed, none of them are structural in nature. We're not changing the physical nature of the mansion at all. Just a matter of turning the lights on at a different time, dumping the recycles at a different time, having trash collection at a different time, from a different area. These aren't really physical changes to the property at all.
But it's going to be a continuous use of a, of a facility versus one license, one event.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what you mean by that. Continuous.
Continuous use. You're going to have it every day. This bar is going to be open to.
To the rooms.
To the rooms, correct. So that will change the circulation. It will change the trash pickup. It will change the amount of refuse that is, is produced on site.
I, I think.
That's where I'm thinking that the change of use.
Serving drinks to the 48 guests, if some of them choose to drink there, is not going to generate a substantial amount more of alcohol, because we deal with bottles in the room already. People bring their own alcohol in. I would submit that that's going to be minimal at best.
And, and that's where I'm thinking that, I don't know if I'm really equipped to handle this, because I do see it being a little bit of a change of use. Is this something that needs to go to the zoning board? And we didn't receive all of the documentation until the night of the meeting or post-meeting, when we originally, when we originally heard this. In light of all of that, I'm a little concerned as far as, you know, okay, now I'm delving into all these documents, the resolutions, the engineer's report. The more I'm thinking about it, the more I'm saying that I think it is a change of use.
When the engineer's report and the zoning officer indicate exactly the opposite?
Well, yeah, but we also have to take a look at everything else that our solicitor stated, you know, the, you know, the public, the public good, the location of it. I'm, I'm struggling with it.
So members of the public have testified before you that the changes that we are voluntarily doing at your request are going to be appreciated by them and be an improvement to the neighborhood.
Some have.
And that's a matter of the record, right?
Yeah, and some have and some haven't.
Well, I just want to say thanks for your consideration of everything. And, you know, however you vote, you vote. I know you guys vote your conscience, so I'm not worried about that. And, you know, thanks for your service.
Thank you.
Hi, Janet Copeland, 737 Washington Street. I do live right across the street from your front door. Unfortunately, I was not able to come to the last meeting, so I'm coming in a little bit late to the party, so I apologize for that. And unfortunately, I was not invited to the meeting of the neighborhood. I don't know why there wasn't a more of a broadcast out to other people who live in the vicinity, because I've lived there for 24 years and was not made aware of it. Just a couple of things that I had questions on. I read in the paper and in getting information from your past meeting that, of course, there have not been any calls to the police about noise and problems at the Southern Mansion. And as a neighbor, I would say, on the whole, you've been a very good neighbor, but not always. And I have made a number of trips across the street and a number of phone calls at times, particularly when there's a, some kind of an event happening, usually a wedding. The wedding is fine, but when the wedding is over and the guests are out on the porch and on the lawn till midnight or after making a hoot and holler of it all, it is a little unnerving. And my question is, is what is this going to do to that? To Ms. Baldwin's comment, that happens once in a blue moon. I mean, the number of weddings that you're holding there has diminished significantly since you have other facilities that you can use. So in the past, it was a little bit more of an issue. But now that everybody who, who is there can have a drink in their hand, are they going to be able to come out on the porch and out on the lawn anytime that they're staying there and enjoy that beverage?
So individuals that are staying there will be able to sit on the porch and have a drink, yes.
And as a neighbor, if I know someone who's staying there, can they invite me over and my family over and my friends over to drink with them on the porch?
It's only open to room guests with keys.
Room guests with keys. So they, but they can bring the beverages outside?
Yes.
Yeah.
The premises will be licensed.
Yeah, that, and I guess that, that is my concern. I mean, people are having a good time. They're on vacation and being up in the middle of the night means nothing to them. I have grandchildren that stay in the front bedroom of my house that's so close to your porch that they could throw a baseball and hit it. So, you know, I'm, I'm just concerned about an increase in noise, an increase in aggravation. I, I want to be a good neighbor as well. I don't want to be on your front porch complaining or making phone calls or worst-case scenario, calling the police, saying, can you look at this one more time? So at this point, having heard what everyone else has said, I don't know what these conditions are that you agreed to. The Corgie Street folks, as neighbors, live behind you, have a bit of a different viewpoint than the people who are facing and are just feet away from the events that are happening out on your front lawn. So I just think, I ask council to take that into consideration. If it does pass this time, I would like to see in the future, at the one-year anniversary of this, maybe a little bit more of, made more of an issue, not an issue, but more open and obvious that this is going to be readdressed because it is a residential area. We have little kids in the neighborhood and we need to make sure that we are aware of everybody's concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Zoning board meetings do require 200-foot notice?
And that's, that's kind of an issue with liquor license transfers, is there's a publication requirement, but really the, the attention-grabbing part.
And I know they've met those.
No, there, there's no notice issue with this application. The applicant's done what they're required to do, the, under the statute. But really, as a practical matter, these discussions heat up inevitably when it gets placed on an agenda and people that follow the city council agendas or any other agenda of municipalities, they see that and then it's time for discussion.
But just specifically, if, is any zoning board application requires 200-foot certified letters?
Any zoning board application that requires variance relief.
In this?
If, if there was a change in use, let me put it this way. If the, the applicant understands, whether they understand it or not, they've indicated that they do, but the city has a string of prior approvals and court decisions which indicate that this currently is a tourist guesthouse. If that were to change, and what the zoning officer's determination appears to be, that if citing a liquor license at this location is an accessory to the tourist guesthouse, it's not a change in use. And I, I read that as maybe because it's not open to the public and the swinging the doors open to the public part of it is what would trigger this use variance. That's their opinion. I, I think there are other considerations and I think, so to, to quickly answer that question, if that were to be the case and they wanted to change the use and open, swing open the doors to the public, use variance application, site plan application that would go to the zoning board, and yes, 200 feet of notice to the surrounding property owners and publication of the paper as part of that application would be required. But I want to hone in on something that I think Councilwoman Baldwin was concerned with, which is this change of use discussion. So the zoning officer has a determination here and says it's not a change of use, but I want to highlight and go back to what I said earlier, is that there's, you can have changes of use at a site that are, it's one tick above not changing anything, but maybe a few ticks below a use variance. That doesn't mean that nothing's changing on the site and doesn't mean you can't take that into consideration. So I, we're not here to like revisit a zoning decision, but those same considerations, all those site-appropriate conditions and concerns about where this is located and what the impact of liquor license operations would have on the site are 100% appropriate to consider by council as part of the public interest. So I just want to be clear that that's appropriate to consider. And in addition, you can take into consideration the information that the zoning officer has provided as to their determination.
And council, if I may, to that end, the applicant has been scrupulous in its representations to you that we're not going to be open to the public. We have exhaustively met a list of conditions after discussing with anyone in the neighborhood that wanted to meet with us. Anyone that contacted us, we met with relative to this after the last meeting. And we've tried to address all those concerns in a manner that would facilitate being a good neighbor and making an orderly scheme here.
I, I have to actually agree with that. I think most of the issues that were brought up at the last meeting are addressed in your conditions. I don't think there was really any specific concerns that weren't addressed in those conditions. And if I'm wrong about that, I'd, I'd like to know, but I, I think the issues that were raised were addressed in the conditions. Obviously, there's some people that aren't going to support the transfer in general. Okay. Counsel? Your mic.
Shoot, I forget what I was about to say.
Anyone else while you think about that? Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to comment. Do you, you want me to go?
Yeah, you go ahead.
I just saw two hands in the public. Do you want to hear them? Or, I'm sorry, because should we close public comment at a point here or how, how should we handle this?
We have some people here. I would, I would hear anybody out that wants to speak.
I don't want to cut, we didn't close public comment, but should we?
We, we should, if there's other people that haven't spoken yet that want to make comment, I would open.
I'm saying after them. Anyone who wants to speak now is going to get their chance, but we, we have to close public comment at some point, right?
Yes.
I'm going to close public comment soon. Who else would like to speak from the public?
Yes, I'm Beth Acker. I live at 637 Hughes Street. Used to live on Corgie. And my whole, my only question is, the term for the sake of the public or for the good of the public?
The public interest.
Thank you. Is what keeps sticking in my mind because it's not open to the public. All right? So I'm public. That's the only thing I understand about these things. I know I'm a part of the public. So I won't benefit from this unless I'm attending a wedding. I'm, I'm not going to go in and admire the gorgeous bar or anything because I don't have access to that. So that's what keeps coming in my mind. I'm not so sure what my benefit is to having a liquor license at that establishment. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Acker. Any, I, I thought I saw one other hand. No? I'm going to make this last call for public comment. Anyone else?
John? Just make sure you state your name and address again.
Okay, my name, it's John Adunia. I live on Corgie Street. The big idea with a million dollars going to the liquor, getting, buying a liquor license, it doesn't make business sense. Although my point is that there's going to be a lot more weddings there, a lot more weddings and special events because they'll benefit from it. It'll be their liquor selling. So in terms of weddings, conventions, whatever they want to call it, it'll be a big increase. And most weddings average, what, 150 people? There's not enough parking there. There's nowhere close to parking there. So I think that should be your consideration also. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to speak? I'm going to make that last call, going once, going twice. Okay, we'll close public comment.
May I make one closing comment, ma'am?
Yeah, yeah, please.
Relative to that, as the council is aware, there are a number of wedding venues available to some of the owners here. The larger weddings usually occur at Willow Creek. Smaller weddings occur at the Southern Mansion. So there's no plan in the model to turn this open to larger wedding facilities when we have other locations to do that.
And you have alcohol currently at those weddings, correct?
Yes.
At Southern Mansion is what I'm saying?
Yes, alcohol is.
Under an event?
Right, under an event, yes.
Understood.
I'm sorry, as well as Willow Creek? Or is it just the, the wine and?
So Willow Creek serves.
Well, let's.
Well, he, he opened the door.
Okay, okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
If they want to bring in outside liquor, event people, they can do that with Willow Creek.
Okay.
Okay, we've closed public comment. Counsel, any questions or comments?
I have comments. First, I'll start a question. Would you be?
Microphone change.
I'm sorry. I have a couple of questions, a couple of comments. I've just remembered. Would you object adding certain things to this, to the conditions list? Well, what I'm thinking is, you know, say if somebody were to call the cops on this place and a police officer were to pull this, this conditions list, I would feel more comfortable if it explained that this was a guesthouse in an R2, RS district, which does not allow any outside customers. So if, so if your neighbor over there sees her neighbor over across the street.
Yeah, I think we stipulated that.
Well, I'd like as a part of the conditions, in case somebody calls the cops and the cop has to pull this out and say, well, what are they not allowed to do?
Well, you'll have them on your resolution and in the license. I'm not understanding. We've consented to that.
Then if it's consented.
But why can't we add it to the list?
It is on your list, I believe.
I'm not seeing it.
We, we previously indicated that in our correspondences. It's not on that additional list. Those were additional items. But we previously indicated in our business model that there would be no outside service.
My question was, would it be an issue for you to add it to the conditional list?
No, it was my understanding it was on there.
So the, the condition I think maybe Mr. Caravan is referencing, it's in section 17 of the table. I'll just read it. It says, "The historic bar in the ground-level ballroom toward the front of the building will cease service at 10:00 PM during events, but during non-event nights will open, be open until 11:00 PM to serve guests of the hotel only. However, room service for drinks will be served from this location and will terminate at midnight during both event and non-event nights."
Well, I guess that's one way of saying. I thought the way I said it was more explicit.
More succinct. So what, you're looking for something like.
No outside.
For the avoidance of any confusion.
No outside customers are allowed.
Counsel, Councilmember Meyer, we have no objection to that.
Okay.
Our consent was that that would be the way we'd operate. And if you want to craft that, normally council crafts the, the resolution. That's what we've agreed to do.
Right. And another thing I'd like to add to that, bringing it from the 2000.
Just as a matter for the vote, do you?
I'm not there yet.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
I'm just talking out loud.
Okay.
I want to reference in the, the 2003 resolution of the zoning board, I would like, as also part of the conditions list, that guests cannot exceed 96. You know, this gentleman over here says that weddings very often, you know, reach to 150, but if that's what it says in the, in the zoning, that guests are to be limited to 96.
I believe that's overnight guests. That's not just, that's not individuals at the property. Our overnight guests don't ever exceed 96.
Well, 90, okay, let me ask another question. Are there people that are guests of the wedding that are also not staying at the Southern Mansion?
Yes.
And they're permitted to drink?
They're permitted to drink during the event and at the conclude, as, and I think we've put this on the record a number of times. During the event, at the closure of the event, they cease to be able to be served and then the event's terminated and we commence our cleanup. So they will not be served after that point in time. And they can't come in on other nights. On a non-event night, the only people that are served are people that have the room keys.
The only reason I'm asking this is so if anybody from the audience wanted to grab this, it'd be very explicit to read, easy for anybody to understand. That's the only reason I'm bringing this up.
I believe when you put all this in your resolution, any member of the public will be able to get it and it'll have a complete list of all the restrictions.
And then, talking about zoning specifically, when it comes to liquor license or bars and restaurants, we have a amount of seats which is allowed to be used. And that's usually associated with the amount of parking that's available. You know, I'd feel comfortable if there was some kind of seat limit as part of this, you know. I think Mr. Ralph would even agree to that at some point.
Uh-uh.
Right?
When you say seat limit, what are you talking about?
Every bar and restaurant in Cape May has a seat limit.
Right.
Some of them are allowed to use those seats inside and outside, but between the inside and outside, they can't exceed that seat limit. And that's been determined mostly due to the amount of parking available.
Well, we don't plan to introduce additional seating here. I mean, we have what we have there.
What is that? How many seats do you have? How many plan?
I can't do you, an inventory of the couches here as we, but I mean.
Well, to some people, it's a big deal in Cape May.
Yeah, I mean, we comply with your fire code regulations. That places a maximum limitation on the room and we're in compliance with that.
Do you know what that number is?
I don't offhand to tell you the two numbers. There's one for downstairs and one for upstairs.
Well, I, to be honest with you, I can't feel comfortable in passing this without a number of seats.
Well, you could refer to the fire code and whatever they have posted, we would adhere to that.
Okay. Mr. Caravan, are you, you're not proposing operations outside of this 96 registered guest limitation, right? Or are you?
Relat, so relative to guests that are staying there, when we have a non-event night, it's only open to guests. And I will tell you, I'm not aware of a time when we've hit a 96-person limit with regard to overnight guests. Normally, it's two guests to a room. There's 24 rooms. It would be quite an effort. I mean, if some of the people have children, maybe you get a little past that, but the 96 limit is an upper, upper level limit on overnight guests.
Councilmember Meyer, is that what you were pointing to?
I'm talking about the 96 plus the other guests. How many guests are going to be drinking alcohol in this building at a single time? What is the maximum now that we're looking at?
For an event.
During a wedding.
Yeah, no event has more than 150 guests. That's the venue limit that we target for the mansion. Larger events are put at a different venue.
So my thing is, I think that should be stipulated that, you know, the special events guests should not exceed 150. And also acknowledge that there is guests who also consume alcohol, who are staying at the hotel, no matter whether it's up to 96 or not. That's not the argument. You understand what I'm saying?
Right.
So I'd like that as part of the conditions, continuing thinking out loud.
Again, I agree with you. We're almost back to a zoning issue again, which again, I think this should have went to the zoning board and a lot of this would have been fleshed out, to be honest with you, but that's my opinion.
I can make it not a zoning issue for purposes of discussion. I think it's unfortunate that council's having to like problem solve some of these things. It's not really what you're here to do.
No.
But for purposes of getting through this, a limitation on the license as to the number of guests and that type of thing, I think is germane to the liquor license because if you're going to be serving alcohol, council can, you know, limit the use of that. So it would be tied to the liquor license, but so.
So can we come up with a number?
Yes.
Have you ever had more than 150 guests at the Southern Mansion?
So when you say guests, do you mean?
I'm sorry.
Room, individuals staying every night?
Attendees at an event.
The events are usually capped off at 150. I'm not aware of exceeding that.
But you've had, you've had events then with 150 people there in the past?
I would say that there have been events with up to 150 people.
Okay.
Then just piggybacking on that, could you say that you'd have 20, 24 rooms, 48 people staying at the hotel on top of the 150?
Usually, Mayor, those are, those are, the individuals staying there at that time are members of the wedding.
Right.
So yeah, usually there's a huge overlap.
There's an overlap.
Yeah, a very big overlap. So they, they are part of that group.
So we, Mr. Meyer asked a question if we could put a total amount of numbers on the liquor license. Is that what you're?
Mm-hmm.
Do you want that at 150? I mean, I'm, again, I think this is.
Well, I'm just trying to get something out of you guys.
Right.
So yeah, I think 150 is a reasonable number to stick with, not including the people staying in the rooms.
That's for an event.
That's for an event.
That wouldn't be for the, the actual seat capacity during a non-event. That would be the 96.
I'm removing that 96 number to my understanding of this argument. I just think we need to have a cap on the event.
The total amount of people that could be there for the event.
And, and just by way of clarity, the way we're envisioning this, and if you come to the mansion, I think Mr. Lynch, when he came there, there's a kind of serenity there. It's not really a loud place inside when the people come down to visit. Some of them will be drinking in the rooms. Some of them will be sitting downstairs drinking. Others will be going out. So of the 48 guests, it's highly unlikely that all of them are going to be drinking in one place at the same time. That's usually our experience and that's the way we're envisioning this.
And just so you know, I'm just trying to tighten this up for everybody's sake. I want to make this a win-win thing for everybody.
Absolutely. And I'm trying to explain it to you in light of the way that the operation works there. But generally, during non-event times, it's a pretty quiet place.
All right, any other comments or questions from counsel and leaving on the agenda what you just said?
I would like, I just, I would like to make some comments on the subject. You know, I think that, first of all, that we're not separating the Southern Mansion from the liquor license and we're really here to vote on the liquor license. And I understand that. And everybody's got to understand, the concern is that the liquor license is going into a residential area. I guess I look 100 feet away and see a liquor license in a residential area, in R3 zone, and that seems to work out fine. Doesn't seem to be a problem. What changes at the Southern Mansion in my mind? I see the events are no different, except that now maybe we'll have licensed bartenders at every one of the events. And we'll have controls that you folks have agreed to, that I think the neighbors should really appreciate. I think the fact that you've worked with the neighbors and I think, I hope, you'll continue to work with the neighbors to make their life better. And so this all works in the neighborhood. If you didn't do this, their life wouldn't be any better, I think, going forward. They're going to have all the problems that they've had, except when you guys came in for this liquor license, you have enacted a lot of change, hopefully, and will continue to do so in the future. I think if there are other problems that the neighbors have, we have code enforcement, we have law enforcement, I would expect that they would help us out there too. We have the zoning board that says this is okay, and I've got to listen to what they say. I'm sorry that not everybody agrees with, that there are some nuances to this. But I, I think that, to your point, are we better off, is the town better off with this? I say, I think so. I think that this is a way to make the Southern Mansion a better neighbor to the town. So I, you know, that's, it's, hopefully, we're going to see things improve. We're speculating as to what's going to go wrong here. And really, the only difference is when there's no event. And when there's no event, it's only going to be the people that are staying there that are allowed to drink alcohol. So those are my comments. I just think that we've speculated a lot. I believe that it's something that we should let go ahead and everybody's got to remember that this isn't forever. This is not a permanent change. And I don't care if you paid $5 million for the license, that's your problem. You know, hopefully, it'll work out for you, but what I'd like to see is the neighbors of the Southern Mansion have a better environment than they have now. So.
Thank you, Mr. Yeager. Any comments?
I think I made most of my comments.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just disappointed that the zoning board did not have a chance to look at this. And I'm, I think, I do still strongly believe that it is a change of use. We received a lot of information on this at a very late date, and I don't think that we were prepared to see all of the documents that we had. And.
When does the license expire? When do you have to come back?
They are renewed in June, the end of June of every year.
Okay, so it's.
The licenses expire July 1st annually, so council will have to pass a resolution to renew a liquor license sometime in the month of June. It'll be on an agenda and there will be public comment.
So you have an annual control over this?
Public comment.
And that's another consideration. I mean, you know, for people that are upset with my opinion on this, I think that it's not a permanent decision. We can revisit it next year.
And I think your point is well-taken, that you have more control in this situation than you do when people serve alcohol at their weddings without licensed bartenders and no liquor in place.
Exactly.
I'd just make a couple of comments. Usually at zoning board or planning board meeting, you make your comments as you vote. It doesn't normally work that way at city council. I'll just make my bullet points now. I think the current distribution of alcohol is willy-nilly, maybe, I think, I think what this is may not be a change of use, but an improved use of this property. The zoning officer and a planning officer also agree that it's not a change of use in this property. I appreciate the applicant at, working with the neighbors, and I hope that continues. I'm definitely going to make a motion to have 150 guests limit at the special events as part of this condition list. And once again, there will be a one-year renewal, so if anybody has any issues, we'll see you again in, what, like 10 months?
Thank you.
Councilmember Meyer, can I make a suggestion as it pertains to that last comment? We could add number 18 at the end of that list, and it could say, "For the avoidance of any doubt, service during special events shall not exceed 150 people, inclusive of guests?"
Not including.
Not including guests?
Not including stay guests.
Not including guests?
That's 150 plus to people with keys.
Okay. So service during special events shall not exceed 150 people, not including guests. And service at all other times shall be limited to 96 registered guests of the tourist guest house pursuant to prior approvals, including but not limited to the resolution from 96.
Didn't, didn't you say you have 150 total? So it's not including guests? It should be at the event, so it should be including guests?
Mr. Caravan.
Yeah.
Mr. Caravan, your microphone, please. Thank you.
I know.
Yeah, there's a distinction between the event guests and the overnight guests. And many times, there's an overlap, but sometimes there's not.
Can I make a suggestion to counsel, to Mr. Meyer? To avoid confusion between guests, guests of the wedding, why don't you make a total cap? What's the, what's the total number of people who can be served on the property? I just think include guests, include wedding guests, because you know how hard that's going to be to be enforced if we have who's who and all that kind of stuff.
Either way, it's going to be.
Yeah, it's going to be difficult.
Didn't you say that you have your, these venues that are 150 total, inclusive?
I said that the venues have 150 people at a cap. Most of those are room guests, but some are not. So there's, there's a.
So it's 150 total?
It's, no, it's 150 at the event, and then we also have room guests, and there's overlap. Okay? But we don't want to limit, if we have rooms rented out to somebody that's not a member of the wedding, we don't want to throw them out or tell them they can't have a drink there.
Right. But I think that Mr. Meyer's suggesting 150 total for the event. And obviously, you can have, if nobody at the event is, I mean, yes, if nobody is at the event that's staying at the hotel, that you can have 100, never mind. He's just saying 150 people event. You know how many people are coming to your events.
Right.
It's very clear. I think what we're saying is that maximum 150 people total coming to that event, regardless of staying or not staying there. Is that?
Right, and the only point that I would make is that if you have 20 rooms that are not at that event but are staying there, that's. Right, yes. And again, given the business model, the intent is to have events of that size. Larger events are at a different venue.
Right.
Where there's a lot more room.
Understood. So it's 150?
150, inclusive of guests?
Just say 150.
Yeah, exclusive of room guests.
So the original wording, which is 150 people exclusive of room guests. In other words, you can have 150 people for this event, plus whatever occupancy you have for the room guests?
That's what it says.
Right, but the room guests in that instance would not be coming to the event, right? The event's going to be limited to 150 people.
Right. And then at all other times?
But if room guests want to order a drink at their room or something like that, we could accommodate that.
Okay. And, and to indicate that at all other times, this 96 registered guest limitation?
Yes.
It's not a problem because it's already.
Not a problem. That's, that's a way, a way upper limit, yes.
So both of those would be incorporated in proposed 18. So if you want to make a motion to incorporate that.
I'll make a motion.
Can you rephrase that again?
Sure. So I'll just read it again. "For the avoidance of any doubt, service during special events shall not exceed 150 people, exclusive of room guests." And then the next sentence is, "Service at all other times shall be limited to 96 registered guests of the tourist guest house pursuant to prior approvals, including but not limited to resolution number 4396, colon, four."
Can, can I discuss that?
Yes.
Because right now, we have 96 possible room guests as well as 150. So we're looking at 250 people at these events, which I think is, a lot.
Well, 250.
250 people?
Yeah, 200, 246.
Well, what I'm saying is, the event's 150 people.
No, that's not how it's written.
Exclusive.
Exclusive of room guests.
Well, according to Mr. Caravan, they've never had the capacity of 96 before.
I think 96 came out with two people to a room and two children. So that's how they got to 96. I will tell you that it's rarely a time, it's mostly couples, that you'll hit 48, okay? 96 where people bring, all the rooms bring their kids, not, does not happen very often.
And kids are not allowed to drink, right?
And the kids are not allowed to drink. Right. They don't, they don't, so.
Mr. Caravan, are you in a position to say that in no event, will service exceed 200?
I'm in a position to say that event service will be limited to 150 and that, you know, room service or, you know, service to the rooms is going to be excluded from that. In other words, if we have room, room guests in a non-event part of the place, they aren't part of the event.
That's, that's what we're left, that's right back where we started, though. So you have the potential for a 150-person event plus service to guests. Am I, that's what the applicant's proposing, right?
Yes.
That's right.
But that's, that's not under a tent outside or?
No, the room guests don't get to go to the event. They don't get to have the food. They don't get to have any of that unless they're part of the event. And the vent is going to be limited to 150 people.
The next ordinance I'd like us to work on is any liquor license transfers going before the zoning board. Because I don't want to talk about trash cans and, and seats and all that at council meetings. I think that's, that's crazy. But in any event, we're at where we're at now. But in any event, we're at where we're at now. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that into a motion to amend the current condition list.
And to be clear, that condition would be that "For the avoidance of any doubt, service during special events shall not exceed 150 people, exclusive of room guests," meaning that you could have 150 people at the event and up, you know, up to the limitation of guests in the Taurus Guest House. The second sentence would be, "Service at all other times is limited to that 96-person limitation," which was in the previous resolutions.
Okay.
Motion to amend? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Baldwin? Councilmember Meyer?
Yes, to amend.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Abstain.
Mr. Meyer, I have one more question. I hate to belabor this, but I'm trying to give the support to the neighbors. You said that you're going to remove smoking signs, or are you going to put up no smoking signs and things like that?
So there's an area...
Thank you.
So there's an area in the back that has a couple of seats. And we went there with Mr. Lynch and with the group from Corgi Street, and people tend to congregate there and smoke because they just are outside. We're removing the seating from that area. We're removing the ashtray from that area. We're putting no smoking signs in that area, and we will encourage people not to congregate there, so that that area is not being utilized as a smoking area.
I hate to ask the next question, but do you have a designated smoking location?
At present, we do not. And what we're looking at is what Mr. Lynch had previously suggested, which is by the post office, okay? Where you really don't have any issue.
Well, I'm not going to suggest put anything in the...
But we're contemplating maybe doing a no smoking. I mean, we haven't, we're not really there at a policy point. We've committed to removing them from the area where they'll disturb the neighbors.
Well, the reason I bring it up is, in a year from now, if there is an issue, I want the neighbors to be able to remember that.
I'm sorry, you said you want...
When this renewal for this license is up, I just want the neighbors to realize that they have opportunity to say that there's any issues. That's all.
I'll point out, Councilman Meyer, too, number 15 on that list of conditions has, they're not saying where they're going to put it, but it says chairs and ashtrays will be removed from the rear patio abutting Corgi Street, and no smoking signs will be posted in that area.
That's all, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion. I'm sorry, we voted on the amendment. The amendment is added to the resolution. Do I have a motion on the amended resolution?
Before council motions, I wanted to ask Mr. Gillen-Schwarz a question. The resolution that's in front of council varies differently from the resolution that was before council at the last meeting. Some revisions have been made to incorporate the different conditions, and there was revised wording. Do we need to go over that revised wording?
I can explain that.
Okay.
And...
Only because it was tabled, so...
Yeah, that's fine. And one thing I'll also note, nobody said this at the microphone, but I heard some comments in the gallery, "Why are you not reading the letters?" If we read all these letters, we'd be here until 6 o'clock tonight. And we're not required to. This is an informal process, and it's not customary to read 10-point font, three pages long, to do that. And we don't do that to the applicant. We don't do that to the objectors. The letters that are sent in are incorporated as part of the record. Council's got a copy of them. The applicant gets a copy of them, and any member of public that wanted to request them could get a copy of them. Most of them submitted. And the comments range from "I object to this unequivocally" to "I object to this because if these things aren't addressed," to the applicant saying, you know, "Please grant the liquor license." So that's the summary of the comments. That was the process that we had. We gave everybody an opportunity to be heard. The resolution, so just to be clear, we're concluding the hearing portion and moving on to the resolution. And the resolution, as amended, references the July 13 proposed conditions, which are incorporated in this table that's attached to the resolution before council. It acknowledges written objections were received. Council set a date for hearing on July 19 during our regular meeting pursuant to the administrative code. July 28, the applicant submitted another list of proposed conditions following the comments or discussion with the neighbors. Those conditions are also incorporated into the table before council, and that on today, August 2, council resumed and potentially is making a determination on this. And I'll just note again that we just also amended that special conditions list to include that other item that we discussed ad nauseam.
All right. So we have a motion, I'm sorry, we have an amended resolution. Do I have a motion on the amended resolution?
I make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other questions, comments, council?
I just want to thank you for working with your neighbors, working with the city council, and I apologize for speculating in your license. It's none of my business.
Agreed.
Roll call?
Councilmember Baldwin?
Just a couple of quick comments. I was looking at the advantages and the detriments of this, and really trying to find a lot of advantages, especially when it comes to public interest. And I wasn't able to. I really think that this does constitute a change of use. I wish it had gone to the zoning board, so really, for those reasons, I'm going to say no.
I agree it should have gone to the zoning board. I just think this is a better use, a little bit more control, and I think it benefits the neighborhood a little bit better than it does now. So I vote yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Well, I think everybody heard my comments. I think this is worth a shot. So I hope things are going to be better in your neighborhood. That's one of the most important things to me. And I think there will be a lot more control in place, so I'm voting yes.
Mayor Malick?
I live on Corgi Street. I do want to say one thing, that I appreciate that you met with all the residents on Corgi Street. There's a lot of conditions to this license, but I am going to abstain. Thank you.
So 2-1?
2 to 1. 2 to 1, it passes.
Well, that 2 to...
Wait.
I'm sorry.
No.
Council needs three votes.
We need three on the liquor license transfer?
We need three votes for...
I didn't know they need three.
You can reopen. Can they reopen? If they're previously closed?
All right. See you guys later. Sorry about that.
Can, knowing this information, can council vote to reopen this?
To reconsider?
To reconsider.
Yes.
Do we do that by tabling?
You would just motion to reopen this topic, to reconsider, to vote again, is my understanding, Mr. Gillen-Schwarz, if you agree?
Yes. You need, it's a five-member council. You need three votes to, as a majority to make...
If that's something council wants to do.
First, I make a motion to reconsider.
I'll second it for the discussion.
Well, is anybody going to change their votes?
It was always my intention to, considering I'm on Corgi Street myself, we have a lot of neighbors in the audience, I'm not sure if it's appropriate for me to vote on this.
I totally get it.
Mm-hmm.
So? I guess we go to, say, abstain my motion?
I'll defer to Mr. Gillen-Schwarz on that one. I'm not sure if that's a conflict or not.
I mean, certainly, somebody who has, lives on Corgi Street, has an interest in the application. Whether that is such an interest that gives rise to a resolvable conflict, you know, there's people that could live across from Corgi Street that may be in favor of it. You know, it's...
Right.
I think it's a conservative, I think it's a conservative call to abstain from the vote. I'll put it that way. There's nothing improper about abstaining from this vote.
Well, we also know that the next time that we get together on this, it's going to be 2 to 2, probably. I shouldn't speculate, but base it, it's going to be 2 to 2.
Yeah.
So if you're going to abstain, so...
That's a good point. Well, then I, geez. Council, we can take a five-minute recess.
I was going to say recess.
I can review this conflict issue with the mayor, and we can reconvene, if that's what you'd like to do.
I don't want to make the mayor have to change his feelings on how he should vote.
I think the mayor was taking a conservative approach, which I will always co-sign that. But that's, I'd have to look into that a little bit further if we're going to have to reevaluate that.
I'd like to take a five-minute recess and discuss it.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Five-minute recess at 2:57.
Okay.
If everyone could please make sure their microphones are turned off, because we will continue streaming.
Okay, we are now back in session. Time for the record is 3:05. It was brought back to the table, of course, for a vote, and I think we should handle that through a vote, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
There's been a motion and a second to reconsider.
Motion and a second. Does anyone have any further comment? I guess that would leave me. I voted as an abstention. I do live within 200 feet. The fact is, if this was a zoning board, which it's not, I would be on the certified list. And I don't want to change that vote based on how the vote goes down. So it's been my intention to abstain from this, and I'm going to remain an abstention. Roll call.
So again, this is just to reconsider.
Well, we're still...
This is if council wants to reopen the topic.
If we want to reopen, so...
You don't have to.
In light of the information the mayor just shared, which he's not, doesn't look like he's going to be able to change his position on that, does council want to revisit the decision that you originally made on this, which was a two to one vote with one abstention?
Well...
Right, I just wanted to clarify what you were moving on.
So it's the same vote again on the amended motion?
Okay.
Or are you voting to reconsider or not?
You can, if you vote yes in the positive, then council can reconsider and revote. If you vote no, then the issue is, the issue stands.
And...
I've made my comment, which was I'm going to stand with my abstention.
Okay.
Are we ready for roll call?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
No.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Abstain.
So votes stand.
Motion for reconsideration fails, the original decision on the resolution and hearing.
Thank you, council.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, council, we have an ordinance for introduction. It's ordinance 473-2022, an ordinance authorizing the sale of real property not needed for public use by auction to adjoining owners pursuant to NJSA 40A:12-13. This is block 1102, lot 5. Do we have a motion to introduce?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a public, oh, I'm sorry, public portion of the resolutions. Any questions, comments on 473? No? Roll call? Oh, pardon me, go ahead.
One quick question, the second whereas, where, I'd like to have this sold to anybody who's a contiguous owner. So that second whereas, and then the last sentence, it says the municipality may auction the property to the highest bidder among only adjoining property owner, or, never mind, it says it. Among all adjoining property owners only is what I want to put in there. Is that an implied?
I think we're only allowed to do that.
Yeah, I think it's...
That word came from the statute, contiguous adjoining, the sale, because it's a non-conforming lot, would be limited to, you may limit it to...
The con...
The people that surround it, essentially.
Right.
Yeah.
So that's what we were doing in this second whereas?
Tomato, tomato, but yeah, that's essentially what council would be authorized.
Okay, because, yeah, I don't want to, it's three and a half feet, but it's so small.
And that's really why you would do this, is to, it's currently, nobody's paying taxes on it. It's a non-conforming lot, so you would really only want it to go to an adjoining property owner so that they could increase, you know, it would become part of their existing property.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call?
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
Next, mayor, we have the public portions on the resolution only, if anybody wants to speak to the resolutions listed on the agenda at this time.
Anyone here to... Ms. Hendricks?
Well, no, I do. I want to be with you, 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 and the public. Thank you. Good afternoon, I'm Patricia Gray Hendricks, 106 Trenton Avenue. The city council's resolution 20201072022 this afternoon authorizes Cape May County to award a contract for the renovation and restoration of the Franklin Street School into a public county library that will serve Cape May City. It is the latest milestone in a long line of people who have worked towards the project since 2017, when the voters approved the New Jersey Library Construction Bond. Since before 2000, the Center for Community Arts, CCA, our local group of citizens worked to preserve, keep preserving, local American history to renovate the building. Their perseverance is remarkable and worthy of note today. This afternoon, I would like to provide a short history of the project to remind you of the hard work, the diligence for historic preservation, and the future for the families who will inherit this building in their community. In 2017, the city council at the time worked with Cape May County Commissioner Marie Hayes to create the vision for grant money to renovate the Franklin Street School and to elevate that vision to an expanded building serving Cape May citizens in a state-of-the-art library. The Cape May Commissioners, led by Chairman Jerry Thornton, and the Cape May County Library Commission saw the value of this vision and in 2018 conducted a feasibility study. After many presentations, this vision grew to an overwhelming support from the African-American community, the businesses, local schools, the CCA Executive Board, along with many, many Cape May citizens and library lovers who prevailed in November of 2019 when Cape May City Council voted four to one to move forward with the project. The three major partners, Cape May County Commissioners, the Cape May Library Commission, and the City of Cape May committed to paying that one-third cost of the project. In addition to the city and the county funding, we know that the New Jersey Library Construction Bond Grant was awarded to the project in the amount of $3.4 million. We are especially thankful for the outstanding writing team, grant writers, that included our very own volunteer, Susan Bryant, as well as Andrea Orsini, who serves as the Cape May County Library Director, which all resulted in the New Jersey Library Association naming this team the 2021 Recipients of the New Jersey Library Association's Champion Award. What is also notable and such a milestone this afternoon is that the county is actively preparing a construction award for this library. I believe the important factors in moving the vision from concept to reality were dynamic leadership, broad community support, and the collaboration of the city, the county, and the Library Commission, and the New Jersey Library Construction Bond Grant. We remain committed to this project, and the community anxiously awaits for the construction to begin.
Thank you. Any other, sir?
I'm David McKenzie, 1148 Washington Street, and Executive Director of the Center for Community Arts. I really can't add much to, more to what Patricia said, just to really thank the city for sticking with the school and with us for 20-some years, trying to put this together. Things were flying high and everything was going well until 2008, when the world started to crash, and we had difficulties since then. But it has all come to fruition. We had a few false starts, but I think we are on our way now. And on that way includes about $700,000 of investment that we've put into the building already, with another $600,000 coming from our piece of the state grant, which will be melded with the county money and some other federal money. And I think in terms of the support that we've seen, I think, I'll leave you with this note, that of the original $700,000 that we put into the school, about $350,000 of that was raised from local sources, just residences and businesses in Cape May, not grant funds. So we continue to thank the county, and we can't wait.
Thank you.
Thank you for not giving up on the school either.
Absolutely, yep.
The windows in there the CCA put in.
David, you and the whole CCA group has done such a wonderful job. The fact is, the Franklin Street School wouldn't be able to be rehabilitated without your efforts in preserving it to this day, so...
Yeah, I'll claim bragging right for CCA, not for me, but...
Absolutely. Yeah. Absolutely. Okay, any other public comment? Okay, that's on the resolutions only, of course.
All right, council, anything you'd like to remove from the consent agenda this evening?
Are we pulling 201?
Yeah, 201.
201, we're gonna pull, and then... Can we pull 207 from that as well?
Okay. And we're gonna do 210 separate as well, that's the Phase 7 for Pennsylvania Avenue.
Anything else, council? Okay.
All right, on the consent agenda this evening, we have 205082022, Resolution Appointing Member to the Cape May City Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee; 206082022, Resolution Appointing Members to the Cape May City Task Force for the Existing Library at Ocean and Hughes Street; 208082022, Resolution Authorizing the City to Award a Contract to an Educational Services Commission of New Jersey, formerly the Middlesex Regional Educational Services Commission, vendor Murray Paving and Concrete LLC, for citywide road striping project for the Public Works Department in the amount not to exceed $299,613. 209082022, the resolution for the payment of bills.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
And going back to 201-072022, Resolution Authorizing the County of Cape May to Award a Contract for the Renovation and Restoration of the Franklin Street School.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Velasco, do you want to give us an update on this from the county?
Yes, they still have not gotten anything formal in hand from the low bidder and are awaiting, it looks positive, but like I said, nothing's in hand yet.
Okay. One of the reasons we wanted to keep this on the agenda was in case they did get the signed agreements in hand, so we could vote on it and get the project rolling. Frankly, as soon as we hear, maybe if we can, with everyone's schedule, we'd like to do a special meeting just to get that rolling, if people can make it, if not...
I'd be happy to call in if that's the case.
Perfect, okay. So as soon as we hear from the county, we're good to go, we're gonna push as quickly as we possibly can. Okay.
Should I remove my motion and second it, or, I mean, excuse me, table it, or?
This is, motion's to table, then?
Motion to table indefinitely, if we're not sure of the date.
I'll revise my second.
So motion to table?
Yes, motion to table indefinitely.
And seconded by Councilmember Baldwin?
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
Resolution 207082022, Resolution Appointing Members to the Cape May City Municipal Parking Advisory Committee.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to table?
Good question, yes, yes, motion to table.
Indefinitely, council?
Indefinitely, yes.
Yes, second?
Second.
Okay.
And just one of the reasons for that is Deputy Mayor Sheehan asked for that to be tabled until the next meeting, so she could discuss it.
Okay. Councilmember Baldwin?
I'm gonna vote yes, but I also want to put on the record...
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, if I could. When Deputy Mayor Sheehan brought this up, we all agree that there should be a revision to the resolution with this parking committee and have a new mission statement. And I think she was more looking at the Public Transportation Study Committee instead of a parking advisory committee, so I just want to make sure that that's incorporated into this.
So do you want to work with her on getting that incorporated?
Absolutely, yeah.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, and I'm sorry, do you want to...
And I'm voting yes.
Motion to table.
To table, mhm.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
And we have 210082022, this is a resolution authorizing advertisement for bids for the reconstruction of Pennsylvania Avenue Phase 7. This is from Trenton Avenue to Michigan Avenue.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
And I just, I wanted to keep this off the, we got this late. This is the resolution authorizing bids for Phase 7 of Pennsylvania Avenue. That would be between Trenton and Michigan Avenue. One of the reasons we're bidding this out with several blocks is we want to get Pennsylvania Avenue done quickly so that we can start the safe routes to school. We don't want to put safe routes to school marking downs on a project that's gonna start in a couple, in a year. So we want to combine those blocks under one project, get it completed, so that by sometime, hopefully this spring, the safe routes to school project being done by the county can put all the markings down on the road and on a fresh, new road. Okay. Roll call, any other questions or comments on that? Roll call?
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Yeager?
Yes.
Mayor Malick?
Yes.
Any old business, council?
Old business, council, anyone? No? City Solicitor? New business?
Nothing to add tonight, mayor, thank you.
Any new business, city manager?
Tonight, the police and our public safety have the night out, starting at 5:30 up by the Convention Hall on Beach Street. All the public's invited. We've been working with DEP, trying to get the Pelican Place review done, hopefully we'll have that done soon for the Nature Center. Of course, you know the firehouse meetings continue, we'll be meeting this Thursday morning with progress. It looks like all the brickwork's just about done. We met with the neighbors on the Atlantic City Expressway, Atlantic City Electric, they used the same thing, Ace, substation. And we're gonna meet tomorrow afternoon to resolve some of the concerns there. You talked about Pennsylvania Avenue reconstruction, we've been having meetings on that. We had a meeting regarding the implementation of the lead-based hazards in rental housing, so we're working on that issue. Received an update on no smoking signs, we just put all the no smoking banners on the beach again and around the parks and the mall, the signage, including marijuana now on the signs. We're looking into more places for AEDs to save lives in the future, God forbid somebody has a heart attack. We're moving things around here in City Hall, doing some streamlining departments and putting them where they believe it should be in place. Pedestrian crossings on, we just put it in today, the mayor was complimenting the Public Works about a crosswalk right there between the public housing, right there on Broadway, and they did a really good job. We're continuing to work and evaluate the electric vehicle charging stations, locations, grant money, how we're gonna pay for it if we can get them. And that's about it, mayor, we've been real busy with a lot of projects. This council's been working on a lot of things, including the Quaddis Park, and things are moving fine, all the employees are happy, and City Hall is open for business every day.
Very good, thank you very much, and I do compliments to all of the staff. Through the middle of the summer, I think everybody gets a little bit burnt out right in the middle of the summer and getting a little toward the end, and I gotta tell you, they're doing just a wonderful, wonderful job. On that, somebody who has been with us for 39 years in the water department, Maggie, just retired. I think when you start working in your 39th year, you might make as much money if you just stayed home. So you've gotta really enjoy your job, so she just did a wonderful job for the City of Cape May for 39 years, so we thank her very much. I do want to compliment the DPW and the water department, the foot wash station that they put in at the Cove. Great job, got it in real quick, and I know they're looking at a couple other, maybe easy picking spots that we could announce at a later date. I also want to just recognize the drought conditions that we're in. The governor declared the drought in South Jersey and in our area, reminding folks of the use, especially of your sprinkler systems. Please read the code, these days, everybody has a controller for your water and sprinklers. Make sure what you have it set to is to the code, because as we enter this drought territory, code enforcement will be looking out. You do not want to be watering during the day, and there's certain days for whether, if you're on one side of Madison Avenue or the other side of Madison Avenue. So please, if you haven't done that and set your timer, look at the code, you can Google it, write in Cape May City Code, look up irrigation timing, and it'll come right up. Again, it's, the division is Madison Avenue, one side or the other, and there's different days, and I'm sorry I don't have it right in front of me, but it's very clear right on there, set your timer right to those regulations, you won't have a problem. Also, if you go outside, you'll notice a big pile of solar panels in our parking lot in the back, they're going up on the roof, hopefully ASAP, but that's moving along, and that'll be really cool to see happen. Like you said, I just compliment again DPW for getting the crosswalk right, you know, we didn't have a crosswalk on Broad Street, which as everybody knows is like our highest concentration of children, so after today, that's in. And council just approved $300,000 to do the entire city for repainting of striping of the crosswalks and sheroes, so that's approved now.
That'll be done in five different areas.
Throughout the whole town.
The whole town, but I mean, one at a time, be five sections, yes, sir.
That's awesome, so I think we all know that's due, and I'm excited to see that. And just also, National Night Out, which is getting sooner and sooner here, but starts at 5?
5:30 in front of Convention Hall.
5:30, always a fun time, National Night Out, so...
And I think a few council members have volunteered to go into the dunk tank, if I'm not mistaken.
Did I skip?
As well as the mayor.
Council comments?
You did, but it's good.
I went right into my own comments. I went right into my own comments, I didn't want my thunder stolen, I guess, I'm sorry, I apologize. Councilwoman Baldwin, I apologize.
The only, tomorrow night, there's two great concerts, there's a Zydeco Experience, Terrence Simeon on the beach, that's at 6, and then afterwards, Marc Bressard inside, so it's a lot of Louisiana, soul kind of, yeah, that's all I have.
Councilwoman Meyer?
I didn't have much to say, I didn't think, I wanted much to say, but when it comes to the electrical charging station, we've denied some grants, or we've not used the grants that we've got in the past because of the expense, so when it comes to location, I would just say, get them close to electrical conduits, you know, that way we're not.
Cheap.
Yeah, I think cheap. And also, just something I heard the other day, you know, has to do with our desolidization, I'm so proud that our, you know, past leaders decided to put a desolidization plant in our town, and as we're looking at that and exploring of expanding it, I heard somewhere that there, most of the countries' water that people drink has already gone through other people, so I just, that's such a terrible thought, and I just think it's, I'm just so lucky to live in Cape May and have the best water around.
We have good filters, okay. Mr. Yeager?
So I, I think I basically have a question. I'm the liaison for the Environmental Commission Cape May, and most municipalities in the state, their environmental commission has, they have liaisons from both the planning and from the zoning board, and for some reason in Cape May, we only have a planning board liaison, and I was wondering if there was any history or reason why that's the case, and was, if that, if there's no restriction to it, what do we have to do to go about, basically having, you know, the environmental commission should be reviewing zoning board applications as well as planning board, so, any reason for?
I think it's land use law, for some reason, that's what I always.
That, that comes from the municipal land use law, and that's, I'm not gonna bore you with the site, but the, what we've done recently is we have non-voting members, and we could potentially have a non-voting member of, from the zoning board be a part of that process, so that, that would be an option, they wouldn't vote, but like, we have, we have an auxiliary member that doesn't vote, and we can, we can add another category, and I believe that's probably what other municipalities have done, to say that we want both the planning and the zoning board to know what the environmental commission's concerns are, and we can do that by an ordinance amendment.
Okay. That's great. All right. Do you want to work on that with the Solicitor then?
Absolutely, if that's okay.
I can, I can have something for next meeting if you want to do.
Great, I thank you, appreciate that. Council, I mean, the commission would appreciate it very much.
That's great. Anything else?
Mayor, if I, I do have one.
I skipped you too.
It's been a long afternoon.
Sorry.
And it's my understanding that tax bills have been held up and being mailed out for something outside of the city's control, so we will be postmarking and mailing tax bills this Friday, August 5, and they are due August 31. The water bills have been mailed, and they are due August 19. We're getting a lot of phone calls, so they'll be going out Friday, they're due the 31st, water bills are due the 19th, and if anybody has any questions, they can call the tax collector's office.
Perfect, thank you.
And that is it.
Motion to adjourn?
Public comment?
Yeah, I need the sheet in front of me, I'm sorry. Public comment, anyone wishing to speak? Mr. Ross?
Jules Ross, 1010 New York Avenue, just a small comment, but it's a big comment. Shane, Councilman Meyer recognized the issue, the application that was before the board from the liquor license, there was no discussion about parking. For the first time, I heard 96 occupants in 24 rooms with never a mention of parking. Now we've gone from 96 up to a total of 246 people can be there on any given night, no mention of parking. It is disturbing to see over the years the number of applications that have come before our boards, and they've waived or diminished the parking requirements, and we are now suffering from that dereliction, as I believe it is.
Thank you.
I totally agree with that, I've seen that as a member of the zoning board, and some of the members even know about the certain programs we have, such as paying a fee to have a, to not have required parking space.
Right.
So, he's right on.
Patricia Hendricks, 106 Trenton Avenue, I'm not sure who to direct this to, but I think I heard it come from Mr. Velasco, so I was curious whether or not the city has taken any steps to renew their subscription with Vimeo, who obtained Livestream as an additional platform, in order to be able to migrate the data of eight years of resources that this city has maintained.
Lots of attempts were made, all of them were unsuccessful, and they canceled our account and immediately deleted all the videos.
Did you offer to pay the $499 when the subscription?
Yes, we offered, we asked them for a price to get the videos back, and they told us that can't do it, the price didn't even matter.
So, is it fair to say that it wasn't renewed in time, that it went beyond the expiration date?
Yeah, it went beyond the expiration date, yes.
The city allowed it to go beyond the expiration date?
I wouldn't say it was allowed, it wasn't purposely done, there was changeover in staff, the subscription renewal went to a member of our organization that is no longer here, went to an email address that wasn't being monitored, and we got canceled. And then we found that out, and we went to go on the videos, and they were gone, and they were gone, gone.
It goes to a private account?
No, it went to a city account, it just wasn't getting monitored.
No, I just, I was trying to understand, in other words, you just said that it went to a count?
It went to an email address to an employee that was no longer working here, and the email address was not being monitored.
Can you redouble your efforts to regain the eight years of primary resources that were part of the public?
We put forth a lot of effort, and like I said, we didn't even put a price cap on it, we asked what would it cost to get these videos back, and we're told they're just gone, we deleted them, there's no way to get them back.
Mr. Gillensworth, have you aided this process at all, knowing that you might be able to negotiate that, and understanding the migration of data and anything else that would come up subsequently for the city to be asked and not have those?
Sort of a loaded question, but I'll say that I trust the management and the administrative staff that.
Oh, I do too, but I'm just saying, can you lend your legal expertise to, Mr. Velasco has so many things to do, can you do that so that it perhaps is heightened, knowing that the city Solicitor would be leaning in on this and benefiting all of council and all of the city?
If that's what the administration wants me to do, is take another swing at it, I'd be happy to. I'll tell you that I have relied on those videos in the past, you know, when I used to do, when I wasn't the Solicitor.
Yeah.
It's a great resource.
We all have.
But I will say that we do have other resources available, we're required to keep minutes under the Public Meetings Act, but we also have recordings of those meetings, it's not as exciting as watching a video, but we do have those available, I think. But yeah, the short answer is, if there's anything I can do to help, I'll, I'd be happy to take another swing at it, but I know that, I know that the city manager's office was on them for a while, and we, this was brought up multiple times at council meetings, that we were pushing on that, and I know.
We went back and forth for a long while.
Does that action need a resolution from the council?
Not from our perspective.
To direct you? Okay. I'd be anxious to see whether or not the council would be in favor of that.
They'd take a swing, yeah. I've sent letters for overdue bills before, so this is a light lift, I'd be happy to help in any way I can.
And should that not materialize into anything that goes back on our website, will then the backup verbatim recordings be then available on the website for public record?
You mean the tape recording?
Basically, you were just referring to the.
I, so that's, that's more of an administrative question, I don't, look, the baseline answer is we're not required by law to do that, I know that that would be probably a big undertaking for the clerk's office to categorize all that stuff.
I can't confirm what meetings were in fact recorded versus not recorded, because we are not legally required to record meetings, nor are we required to videotape.
Right.
The minutes are required, so we may or may not have recordings of certain meetings, we make them available upon request, usually through an Oprah request, I would have to go back and see which ones even were recorded, if we still even have those from switching, because we've switched even through livestream, through having livestream, we switched over through a number of softwares in that, because we had livestream for so long.
Correct.
So I don't even know what we have recorded, to be quite honest.
Okay.
I don't think it's realistic to say that we would be able to upload those recordings to the website. If somebody wanted to request a recording of a specific meeting, I'd be happy to try to look into it, the minutes we do upload to the website. And I will say that I also, many, many, many times, attempts at dealing with Vimeo and livestream, once it became avail, or once it became aware that these videos were gone, and it was a nightmare, you can't speak to a real person, for starters. I would not hold my breath that Mr. Gillensworth will have any more luck than we've had, but he's welcome to try, I would love for that to be the case. Ultimately, we did have approval from the State of New Jersey to dispose of those records, you only have to hold on to recordings or videos of meetings for 90 days until the minutes are written, so legally, we're good to go. But they were an asset that people utilized, and that's not lost on me either, but I'm telling you, we hit roadblocks every time.
I think part of that too was, the decision to go with YouTube was, in part, I think, because of, you know, the institutional, the idea that if YouTube goes down.
We're gonna have bigger problems if Google goes on there.
And more so than YouTube, it's the parent company of Google, because a lot of the issues that we ran into dealt with livestream going out of business, being picked up by Vimeo, Vimeo not having, I don't know, what at least appeared to me, not a lot of interest in servicing these accounts, so it's, it's why we started looking, and we luckily switched before it got deleted, so we had a, you know, we didn't lose it altogether for a number of meetings, but it is, it's difficult getting ahold of anybody there, so good luck, Chris.
But we have lost everything, we only have what YouTube has and what the City of Cape May COVID meeting website has on Zoom, so it's just a shame that if there was gonna be a switch, and it had to be a concerted effort to be a switch, that there wasn't somehow some responsibility taken to preserve that information, because there's a lot of history there, a whole lot of history.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Motion to adjourn? Thank you. Have a great day.
Time is 3:42.
Hopefully see most of you at the.